Yeah. You can really appreciate the rebounding.
Call me in the North Reading School Committee to order. First item on the agenda is public input. If anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on any topic not on the agenda, please let us know at this point. Okay, seeing nobody. Next, we'll move to our student report. Tonight, we have Kristin Shavelin. Kristin?
Hi. So this past weekend, we had a lot of sports games. On Friday night, the boys' basketball team, they won their game 59 to 20. They are currently undefeated, eight and zero, and if they win two more games, they make it to the championship. They qualify. On Saturday night, the hockey game had a game at Burbank Arena, and they won 3 to 0. And we played our rivals, which is Lynnfield. On the 9th of January, we had a middle school open house, and that was really well attended by the middle schoolers. Next week, we have midterms starting on Tuesday, so we have two midterms a day, and then for the rest of the week, we have half-days. So our grades will close this Friday. The Adventure Ski Club went really well. They went skiing this past weekend. The seniors have had a meeting last Friday regarding their senior trip, which is going to be whitewater rafting in Maine. Over the weekend, track participated in a meet at Reggie, and boys' high jump came in first place, girls' high jump came in fourth, and girls' hurdles also came in fourth. Wrestling also placed. I think Josh Torcio, who's a senior, came in fourth. And Student Council on February 1st is submitting something called the Book of Excellence, which is a book of all of our projects that we've been doing for the past year. And we are submitting our principal, Mr. Bernard, for an award for Administrator of the Year Award. And we're also awarding our council, Ms. Sainor Noe, she's our advisor, we're giving her an award as well. And there's this one meet next Thursday. And then my student work is a presentation that I gave in my economics class. We had to look at the cigarette industry through an economic perspective, so I had to do research on the description and the history of the industry. And we also had to look at the market structure, which is an oligopoly. So we had to go through that, and we had to present to our class. We looked at the major companies of cigarettes, and we looked at the industry, and it's currently shrinking right now just because of the health trends and the... There's a lot of different products, such as like the nicotine patch that people are using instead of buying cigarettes. And of course, we looked at the supply and demand of cigarettes. Each group in my class got a different industry, like some people got the movie industry, or the car industry, or cereal industry. But I think this one was pretty interesting.
Any questions?
If Mr. Bernard gets that award, he's probably gonna be looking for a raise.[196.12][196.12](Laughter).
You mentioned that Student Council Book of Excellence. Is that something that we could say, the school committee members? I'd love to see that.
When I met with the students today, we spoke about when that is complete and submitted, whether or not they are awarded the award that comes along with the submission. I did suggest that it come to school committee because it's quite impressive. They were telling me about the criteria that are required in order to complete this. So we did discuss it today, and they will bring it forward.
And I also wanted to mention, I think two of our sports teams are undefeated, basketball, boys' basketball, and the wrestling team, the North Reading Lynnfield Wrestling Team. And I know that both hockey and I think girls' basketball both have winning records at this time also.
We continue the trend. And not that the track meet that you were talking about, that was the Class 4, and we came in fifth overall in that. The boys did. We came in fifth overall in that meet.
I think we also did well in the girls' shot put because I think Emily...
Yeah, we did. We came in second.
Yeah, Emily Mari is one of the best in the state in Division 4.
The team came in second in the shot put.
Yeah. So you're right, the fall success is continuing into the winter. A lot of hard work by the kids. Great. Any other questions?
Thanks, Kristin.
Thanks, Kristin.
Okay. Next is part of our ongoing series. One of the things we asked superintendent to do when we met this summer was to have staff come in from the various schools to present us with different programs related to basically what's going on in the schools. I have to say, our favorite one so far was the one when Carl brought the lunch program in, and we got to eat all night. But we expect to have fun tonight. We had fun with the... We had fun with the... Why can't I remember what it was?
Fundations.
Fundations. And if Jerry and I sit together, you'll have to watch us because...
We've got you separated already.
But I have to move because we're gonna have the projector turned on, right?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're not at that far.
All right. So you're lucky.
See, you're staying separated.
Okay. So at this time, I'll have the superintendent introduce the program we're gonna see tonight.
Thank you. Well, tonight, you're going to hear about No Atom. And this is a Massachusetts-based curriculum development and consulting company. We currently offer No Atom to our students in grades 3 and 4. And so tonight, you're going to hear about that implementation, and we are looking to implement in grade 5 next year, but more about that later. So this is a science, engineering, and technology system for our elementary and middle schools. And it provides a standards-based curriculum, so it is aligned with our Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. But it's a hands-on inquiry-based program. And that's fabulous because students are actively engaged in the scientific process and the engineering design process. So tonight, we have our teachers, who have been working diligently on the implementation of this program, along with some pretty significant professional development, to help them become very proficient in this area. Director of Academic Services Patrick Daly was supposed to be here this evening, but unfortunately, he is sick. Hopefully not with the flu, but it is going around. So tonight, we have, though, Beth Levitt, grade 1 teacher at the little school, Kristi Gorman, and she is going to present from the Hood School, grade 4. And Tina Borre, Bachelor School, grade 5 teacher. So they're going to engage you in some information sharing, and you're also going to have the opportunity to experience a lesson. So, without further ado, we're going to have them take over.
Good evening. Like Mrs. Willis was saying, No Atom is a science education organization that has created a STEM curriculum that's helped students to learn science through hands-on inquiry-based approach that supports them with the next-generation science standards, as well as the Common Core standards, while engaging them in a purposeful inquiry lesson. The mission behind the curriculum is to guide students towards scientific reasoning. In order to develop this curriculum, No Atom curriculum writers gathered data from the following areas. They worked directly with students across all grade levels. They reviewed and critiqued constantly current curriculum programs that districts had in place, such as FOS and STC kits, like we had here in North Reading, and along with science MCAS results. And through this, they were able to create a multi-spiraling structure that allows for a gradual release of responsibility. Each year, students are exposed to state-standard-specific material, which layers and increases in depth as students transition to later units and then to later grades. This kind of spiraling allows students to receive a comprehensive review of previous scientific concepts as they apply these concepts to new inquiry-based activities, resulting in an expansion of their knowledge. Each No Atom lesson is designed around individual student projects that bring scientific models and abstract concepts to life. And what they stand behind is that they believe that by creating something tangible and relevant to each lesson, students develop personal connections that positively reinforce their learning experiences in science and engineering. As a former 3rd grade teacher and a current 4th grade teacher, I've had the opportunity of using No Atom in my classroom. Each year, I'm amazed at how much students are able to master in scientific processes through fun, hands-on, inquiry-based lessons and activities. I enjoy watching their faces light up each day when I announce, "Let's get ready for science." It's their favorite time of the day. As you'll see through some of the videos we'd like to share with you, by using No Atom, students are gaining scientific perspective and developing critical thinking skills as they use real tools and apply firsthand knowledge to answer scientific questions and solve technological challenges. So here's to our next generation of scientists and engineers.
I'm gonna try, we'll see how this works. So I guess you might...[581.16][581.16](Laughter). I didn't think I'd put my feet over your head. We shall save.
It's gonna be definitely gonna be over my head, yes. Thank you, Jerry.[588.16][588.16](Laughter).
That's why we... He sits over here.
What we did was we took some video of 4th grade at the little school. So when I went in... Actually, I teach 1st grade, Lou, and I taught 2nd there. What was very exciting for me to see was these 4th graders so independently using these No Atom materials. It was really, really impressive, the scales and the measuring and the language that was being shared between all these kids. Mr. Simmons did a phenomenal job of setting the whole background knowledge, and Tina will show you that a little bit in the lesson. But he really... The kids knew exactly what to do. This class came in, the materials are on the table, they independently got themselves set up, they recorded it in journals, which you'll see a little bit later as well. And so I took some short videos, and I'm just kinda hoping, we'll see how this goes. I'm hoping that I'll be able to show to you.
(Inaudible).
So this is setting up the lesson, so that on the table, they're very, very short clips, about 30 seconds. So they had to get water. The lesson is on sedimentation. The lesson is on sedimentation, and you'll be doing this experiment in a few minutes. You'll be getting three different types of soil and measuring with a scale. Purposely focused just on hands. We have free setups for you tonight that we're gonna be setting up on the different tables. You can see Mr. Simmons had a couple different areas set up for the kids to do. Okay, so now I'm gonna switch to a different video. That was the setup. They're using a very, very specific scientific scale. You can see they have to get exact gram measurements. They need to pre-measure the little cup first, to be able to subtract that mass from the total amount. They have to keep going back and forth on their paper to make sure they get the exact measurements. So after they've measured, then they got to add the water. They put all the different materials, they're adding the water, they'll be attaching a cap to the top before they can shake. I love the teamwork, just looking at hand over hand, which you often see at my grade level, with the teacher being the person implementing the hand-over-hand strategies. But at this grade level, to see the students working together in real partnerships, that's really, really great. And then what the kids did... This one's a little bit longer. This one's two minutes, but it's gonna show you the journal writing. So the students are required to record all of their information in these journals with very, I feel, very sophisticated record-keeping. So they have their test tube off to the side, now they have to start their record-keeping.
Looks like the notebook I had in college. It's very much neater.
These are 4th grade.
Can't just break and keep it work on.
Now they're going to draw. You can hear the chatter in the background. That's the sign of a really engaged lesson going on in that room. There were, you know, 20 children, all very, very actively learning, and it was pretty great. Okay, so now, I'm not sure if I'm gonna do this right. This is my first time using whatever this little thing is here. Was that called? No?
That's a dongle.
A dongle. See? Dongle. Something new.
Very good, Superintendent Willis.
Yes.
Hey. We got the emails, everyone, "Oh, okay, that sounds good to me."
We hire her because she knows stuff like that.
Hey, I was impressed. This here, this is a dongle. See that?
I can't believe you didn't know that.[941.63][941.63](Laughter).
Hey, you know, so what the three of us did as leaders is we get to meet once a month, and we created a blog, which was another new, a new technology term for me. So this is a blog on Blogster that Tina and Kristi and I worked on, and I want to give lots of credit to Kristi because she really... Since she is one of the three of us who is teaching No Atom, she is extremely knowledgeable in it and was able to take some pictures from her classroom, so please chime in. We put some photos on here, just to show you some samples of some of the... Some of what the lessons look like. We put the No Atom's mission, to guide students towards scientific reasoning and all of their intent. We have a quote from a teacher on here, a 4th grade teacher at the Hood, talking about how they just feel the hands-on experience is just absolutely unmatched by any program they've gotten to use. And then we have another couple of lessons here that show the different engineering and different pieces. We have one more small video clip to share. This is a different lesson, so that's why we wanted to let you see something a little different. These are all part of... That's why the hunchet is so extensive. I mean, these are all materials sent to every single classroom in our town for each class. They're in boxes with every single thing needed for the lesson. You can see it's quite extensive.
And I'm guessing that most of them aren't reusable after the first time?
No.
A lot of it's not. There are some consumables that we're able to keep, but a lot of like the gravel, the sand, those types of things would be the non-consumables that we'd have to purchase.
Right. So in addition to our blog, we just wanted to show you the No Atom website, so that any of you at any time that you'd like to get more information on this curriculum, noatom.com is a phenomenal site. It has all the different tabs at the top that you would, you know, normally find. But what we found very useful, that we thought you might like to hear about, is the case studies of the student impact that has been happening across Massachusetts. No Atom is a very locally-based company that is right here. They're out of Salem, and they've worked really, really hard to make... It's a family operation. So you've got this... There's one school in Lynn that is shown here as one of the case studies, showing extremely high growth in their MCAS scores. They were, you know, charged with a pretty big task of increasing their MCAS scores, and they really, you know, just to quote free one thing that I found very fascinating, their success of this first step moved... Oh, that was... That's the next system. I'm gonna show you. They went up from... With no students in the morning anymore after they had done with using No Atom. So they had had students in warning, they went up to, you know, 22 percentage points reduction in their warning. Then they did Manchester Essex, which was the one that I was really impressed with, when it said that there, that Manchester Essex went... Placed them up 137 places in the STEM rank among 309 Massachusetts districts. They went from 202 in 2010 to 65 in 2011. And I thought that was pretty amazing. So what we also liked that Kristi and Tina and I thought was neat was because this is Lynn Public Schools as well as Manchester Essex, so it's showing that it's not just an inner-city place, you know? Different, very, very different demographics. So now, we'd like to do is play. Okay? So...
Well, before we play...
I'd like Cliff to be my partner.[1237.13][1237.13](Laughter).
I'll work alone, I don't care.
Oh, my goodness!
I have a...
It's team-based learning.
At the very least, give me the first grade one.
How long has No Atom been in use, and have there been any studies done on performance on 10th grade tests, MCAS, by students who were steeped in No Atom and...
MCAS has not... Hasn't been long enough for 10th grade's data. It's new enough. So when they came... When No Atom first came here, so this was four or five years ago, when we were curriculum specialists, before we were subject-based curriculum specialists. I was fortunate enough to be working with Camp Oban then, and they came in and did a presentation, and we were in awe of the learning that was gonna be taking place from this program. And so that's what we implemented in 3rd grade that following year. And you could just see the excitement in getting science booming back again in the lives of our children in North Reading. So then we brought it into 3rd grade, and so I don't think there's data to show 10th yet.
I don't think so. I think that they'll be watching that cohort of Lynn students at the Lincoln Thompson School, I believe. I think that cohort is in middle school right now, so I know, talking with the creators of No Atom, they're really focusing on that cohort and watching to see that growth.
And it's gonna be very interesting. And what we really like and what we've seen and what I've heard from Kristi a lot is that the folks at No Atom are very, very hands-on, they're very approachable, they answer your questions very quickly, and they take care of situations very quickly. It's a very, really nice company to be working with and getting the support. Kristi and I were just last week at a presentation by the Department of Ed on science standards, and the person that runs No Atom was there, taking notes, asking questions. They stay up on all of it. So as soon as there's any change in the curriculum, they are changing, forever changing that curriculum. So my STC kit has not been changed in many, many, many years. The No Atom is updated every single year. They send updates, they change the curriculum. If there's any change in anything, they send updates to all the teachers, and the classroom teachers get addendums to put into their curriculum. So that's pretty... That's really important as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you have any other questions? Are we... Get dirty? Okay. There we go. Thanks.
I'm an English major, what do you expect?
Is this gonna be hard?
Mike, we went to state school.[1391.13][1391.13](Laughter).
Engineering has a bit of a...
I know.
Yeah.
I've got the worst degree here.
So tonight, we'd like to take you back to 4th grade science, probably a little bit different from what you've experienced. Our lesson's going to be on sedimentation, as you saw on the slides. And first off, we'd like to tap into some prior knowledge, that's what we normally do with our children. We're gonna be talking about sedimentary rock, but how that sedimentary rock is formed with humus, sand, and gravel. And just to give you an idea of what sedimentary rock looks like, because you probably haven't seen it in a long time, it'll give you an idea of what a rock would look like over millions of years after all of these sediments have been compact and pressed over time. The objective of tonight's lesson is for students to use the scientific method, as you saw in the lab reports. Kids are diligently writing in their lab reports in a specific method, and they are to predict how sediments settle at the bottom of a lake, and in our case, a test tube. The question that students would need to be thinking about as they go through this experiment is how do gravel, soil, and sand settle at the bottom of a lake after a storm? And that storm would be the shaking that you saw the students perform. Here's also a visual of ways that sediment can move, gravity, wind, and water, and over time, they would move and weather in a road and path down into those rocks, and that's what would form after you see the sedimentation taking place over hours, years, millions of years. So today, tonight, we'd like to take you through the process as you saw the children perform, and have you be the students tonight. A couple of things to consider is that you'll be using these scales, and you have to make sure that they're on gram mode and making sure that it's on zero. The other things that we talk to the students about is taking into account the weight of the cups. We'll tell you, so you don't have to do the calculation, but the students are actually required to calculate the cups and deduct that from the six grams that need to be measured out of each particular type of soil. That's .3. So you have that knowledge.
I'm writing it down.
And there's a total of... Yes, write your notes. There's a total of six grams that need to be measured out of each type of soil and put into the test tube. So we'll start off there, but we'd like you to put your goggles on first.
Oh. I can't see. I gotta put goggles on. I'm friggin' blinded here.
I have lots of helpful projects.
I know. Where's the... Where's Cliff Harris when you need him? Taking a picture. I like these.
I can't get the goggles out of the paper.
Jerry and Cliff are gonna... How many do you have?
We have three.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we have Cliff on our team.
Cliff, you're on. You wanna work the scale?
I can take some.
Cliff needs to calibrate the scale.
I'm not taking any chances here.
Okay, so you said six?
You may have noticed on the video that the kids use a white piece of paper.
Are these prescription goggles? Because I can't see.
Well, it'll be not to see the little G and not in their cup.
I can't even see.
What do you got on that?
How do you put it on?
Put on grams.
So I kind of change the mode.
Oh, it was. It was on grams, okay.
And then we calibrate by...
Okay, grams.
Yeah.
All right, so we need six grams of each material.
See, that's... This is... That says it's .6.
In the cup.
She said the cup was .3.
She said .3.
It says .6.
Really?
Look. Now it says eight.
Have you got a zero?
All right, our scale's off here. It's measuring the cup.
We have a calibration that's on grams.
.8, .6.
And these are the things we talked about in the class.
You're trying to make us look...
All right, how do we calibrate?
So the zero is already there.
You do that, it'll turn to zero, and the mode, does it say? I'm looking at upside down.
Yeah, it says .4. .4 grams, yeah. G in there.
Is G grams? How do you get it to zero?
Well...
You're already registering a value.
Is it zero now?
Yeah, now it is.
It's zero now.
That's ounces. That says ounces.
That's ounces. We need to go to grams.
That's not it. Keep going. One more. One more. There we go.
All right, measure the cup.
Let's see, when I put the cup on, it didn't say .3.
Yeah, well, we can get right by that. She says these are all .3.
Okay, so we need...
If they're .3, we need .3.
Yes.
All right, how come we got two cups?
Come on, you're way over, Cliff. Come on.
It's been a long day.
Nine point eight.
Well, I shifted some out, so that can't possibly be...
Eighteen. You need more, Jerry.
A little too much.
.84. Where... I think our scale is on the fritz. This was intentionally set up for Jerry. So it's set up for Jerry, and Jerry and me to fail.
So take that off, and then do the next one.
We need six grams of each, right?
Six point six. Six point six. Take a couple out.
Wow.
That's light, huh?
This stuff is light here.
Yes.
Hold on, Cliff. Oh, that's only four six. We still need more.
All right, a little more yet nil, though. At least you're under.
Our scale is all...
The scale's all over the place?
Yeah.
What do you get there?
Scale's all buggered up.
Five point eight?
Yeah.
See, it's not moving, and he's putting stuff in.
Yeah.
Our scale is on the fritz.
Needs a new battery.
You have to tear it.
The scale's not moving.
No, we did. Okay, one more, Cliff.
Oh.
One more.
Yeah, come on. It went by it while we weren't doing anything.
Take one out.
Is it at six now?
Take the small one. I bet it doesn't read anywhere close to it.
Six point two.
Six point two's too much, isn't it?
Six point three.
Six point four now.
Oh, that's good. Let's see. Yeah, come on. It went by it while we weren't doing anything. Take one out.
Is it at six now?
Take the small one. I bet it doesn't read anywhere close to it. Six point two. Oh, man.
Six point two's too much, isn't it?
Six point three. Six point four now. Oh, that's good, let's see, well, that's good. We're gonna round it, we're gonna say that, since it's been up and down, we're gonna say that's it. Oh, man, we're over. So, that's one.
Yeah, that's close to six. That's close to six.
This is good.
Oh, she's gonna put it in there? Oh, okay. You got that one now? Use that tin cup coming back, bring that cup back and use the sand.
All right, we need to recycle the cups, huh?
That's a good idea. That's when we weigh over, that's when we weigh over.
Thirteen.
Half of it, take half of it. Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, nice excuse.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Superintendent.
What do you got?
Ah, this, too much.
Too much?
This sand is heavy, right?
This is heavy sand.
It's dense, because it's...
This isn't regular beach sand.
It's dense, like, me and Jerry.
Not as much air in it. What have we got?
That's point eight-six, this is like...
And you saw that, you saw the students taking, you know, one little rock out, one little piece of sand out.
Thanks, Kyle. Ooh, yeah, it's getting close now. Mel, you're getting close.
Yeah.
Now, once we put it in there, do we have to mix it with water?
Test tube will pass around the water.
Okay, a little bit more.
And please, put the water into the top of the...
That's good, here we go.
The lunch program gave us all the water.
Okay.
You just, you fill it up with the water?
Yes.
So, don't put too much water in.
Oh, yeah.
We're trusting you, don't go, don't overflow.
It should come out looking like this.
Not exactly.
Not for a certain...
Only a few thousand, hundred thousand years.
I don't think we can say it that long. It's a sediment.
Now, what do we do, shake?
Shake it up.
Does everybody want it?
Shake, shake, shake.
You got the cover on? Yeah. Oh, it's, it's, it's the cover...
Tighten it up, tighten it up.
For at least ten seconds.
All right, now we're gonna get the black stuff.
You got it all on the...
You got it on?
I did the first two. All the black stuff.
Now, be like this way.
It's not gonna fit though.
Make sure you go upside down.
Upside down.
Oh, it's all stuck in the bottom there.
You've got to, you've got to get them all...
It's a bad, bad storm.
And I'm getting soaked because of the...
It's water, lick it on there, that's all right.
My, my iPad's got water all over it, I'm gonna have to get a new iPad now, and that looks good, eh?
Yeah.
Do we put it up, do we, which way do we set it, back on its...
And then you'll...
Put on the cap?
Which geologic period is this from?
The kids will notice over time how it'll be settling, and then we'll revisit the, um, two in about twenty-four hours.
Where's the scale?
Except you don't have enough water in it anymore. You took it all.
I know.
It's settling.
It is settling.
You ready?
Now, look at that.
Yeah, this is full of the...
Look at this.
Yeah, this is full.
Look, we spilled all the...
Look at this, we already got sediment, come on! We already got sediment! This is how you do it right.
Yeah, exactly. I, I got it, thanks. So, so then they look at the different layers and then...
Kathy, Kathy, this is how it's supposed to come out when you're done.
Okay.
All right.
Not so much, I'm not saying it.
Which geological period is this from?
When you were born.
Sorry, that wasn't right.
Why are we so far behind us over there?
They got, because they did it right.
Now, look.
We need water.
The water comes out.
Oh, she can keep adding water?
Well, theirs, I think, has a little too much sand in it.
I thought it looked wrong.
Oh.
Our scale was wrong.
Yeah, of course it was.
This is the final part.
We get two rocks out of ours already, we haven't even tried.
And basically, at this point, the children be incorporating all of this data into their lab report journals, which we'll show you a sample of. Quite specifically, if we think we're a fourth grader. They follow a process where they need to title it, the sedimentation. Question, research, whether indicating five or three facts that they researched about the particular concept. The hypothesis, summary of the experiment, the materials used, and then their procedures in the scientific diagram. The diagram would be a before and after, so, once it's shaken, and then we would revisit the test tube in about twenty-four hours to see how you would notice the sediments, how they'd be settling. So, we'll pass these around for you to take a look at how students are reporting their data. It's on the first two pages that are open.
I like my sediment shaken, not stirred.
The rocks and that black sand and then that loose, the top soil, right?
But what's this?
And you'll see that that will space over, and over time, it will settle.
That's, that's pretty good, though. I like the way that came out, that's pretty good, the way the layers...
Yeah. No, then the sand, the soil, the black soil is right there.
Right.
And then the sand.
Here's some examples of fourth-grade work.
Pretty good.
Looks like the sand.
Now, that's the rocks.
Now, we just gotta sit here for like... I'm going in five years. Well, I'm going into science now, I'm changing my field of...
I think we won that, Cliff.
Professional field, I, we did, oh, yes. Was it a time thing?
Definitely not, definitely not.
But you want to, you want your scientists to be thorough and fast.
Exactly.
So, this is all about kids seeing firsthand, on...
Yeah, really getting...
That's pretty cool.
To understand the concept of...
Understand the concept, and then, like, understand what you're...
Rather than looking at a picture in a book with just the sediment layers. Thank you.
Reject the null hypothesis.
I think Kathy and Carl failed, because I'm looking at their sample and...
It's a rock. It's already a rock. Carl is a...
I'm waiting for the next class when we make it into metamorphic.
I like this.
So, I'm discussing types of rocks in psychology.
Cliff is actually older than the sediment.
Here's, here's where they wrote, look. You remember where those were due?
That's pretty good.
Thanks. I like this.
You're gonna keep yours.
This is pretty good. Hypothesis.
It's the first experiment I've ever done since grammar school that came, I never did one that came out right.
You still haven't.
It doesn't look like it's going too well.
It's, it's like yours.
No, it's, it's separated, we got...
Yours is separated.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
It should be.
Over twenty-four hour base.
What does...
They're just gonna stay here overnight.
Our, our chief, will be online.
Oh, yes. I feel like I'm on the Big Bang Theory.
Bingo.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, so, do you have any questions for us?
Is this one kid's notebook, I mean, for all the experiments, really, wow, wow.
Each, each one of these notebooks are branded with...
Wow.
Is, is the whole...
It's pretty good.
Is the entire year...
It's amazing.
Do they do experiments one day, one day a week, hands-on, or is it every day, or how?
Well, there's a lot of prior knowledge, there's a reader that goes along with it, all of that sort of tapping in knowledge that I kind of went through, they had before we go into the experiment. And even, there's a lesson of how to set up the notebook. As you can see, it's very formatted, there's sort of like a template that they need to follow. Even how to use a scale. Obviously, you saw that there were some difficulties with that.
Yes.
And how to calculate, using the scale and the different modes. Also, if you're using a cup, you need to deduct that weight, so there's a lot that goes into it prior to the actual experiment, but the experiment's probably once a week, maybe? Each unit usually has about two hands-on activities for the children to do.
And previously, we, there really wasn't any hands-on, or there was very, a lot less hands-on experimentation in our science program, correct?
Very different.
Yeah.
For example, I teach first-grade science, and we have the STC kids, and right now, we're doing solids and liquids. And so, I'm doing a lot of comparing of different solids, I mean, instead of twenty solids, so there is very, there is hands-on, because for six- and seven-year-old children, that's really where they're at. And that's why I think we decided that the No Atom's, you know, three, four, or five is really a critical time for these kids to be learning all these study skills. So, the one point that I want to make was the third grade, do not have the journal book set up in the same, in this way. There's, they have readers and things, but then when they get to fourth grade, then they're taught the study skills, they're taught how to go back in, and the vocabulary becomes just that much more advanced. And every year, it just keeps building, it's that spiraling program building on top of each unit. So, there is, there, there were always some hands-on activities, but not as well thought out as No Atom does.
It's good for us to see this, because every year, we have, as you know, budget struggles, and to see, this program is, is costly. And I know for a while, we couldn't expand it because of budget issues, and I think we've now kind of built it into the budget every year, so...
Thank you.
It's a good program. I would, I would like you to do us a favor, please save those test tubes and come back in a million years, so we can see. We want to see who won, who has the best rock. Yeah, so, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
We can accelerate that if we put a little heat...
Yes.
Nope, that is not what it says in the directions.
I just wanted to add, Beth alluded to it a little bit, but each one of them serves as the science curriculum leader for their school. And so, even though there are some, two out of the three here are not teaching this unit, you hear how conversant they are in the program and how important this program is to the science curriculum of the elementary schools. So, thank you, ladies, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks a lot.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you. Okay, we'll let them get cleaned up.
Well, we're gonna move right along.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at the time, so I need to project the image again.
Oh, so I need to...
So, yes, please.
Should we move?
Yes, please.
I'm like, I know.
I want wheels.
I need a place... I need a place for my own. Okay, so next, we're going to have, superintendent is going to present our budget vision for fiscal two thousand and fourteen.
So, while this is warming up, in your packet I provided for you, a narrative that took you through the budget vision from this, for the next fiscal budget year, which is FY fourteen to FY sixteen. But as you know, we have what's called NRPS twenty sixteen in this whole district right now. And so, what that is, this is our five-year continuous improvement strategy for the future. We also call it NRPS twenty sixteen. So, what I'd like to do for you this evening is remind you how we got to this point, and then talk about how twenty sixteen, NRPS twenty sixteen, has an impact on how we plan for the budget from this year moving forward. So, you may remember, a couple of years ago, I came to you and talked about developing a continuous improvement plan based on the book Strategy and Action by Liz City and Curtis, Elizabeth Curtis. So, what we did with the administrative council is we identified major strategy areas after taking a look at all of the initiatives that were taking place across this district. Then we created a theory of action and strategic objectives initiatives, and we developed a multi-year action plan for each of these major strategy areas. The three strategy areas are teaching and learning, student services, and technology integration. So, all of the initiatives that we have going on in this district right now fall into one or more than one of these categories. And as you know, when we developed this strategic plan, we developed three objectives for each of these major strategy areas. And each of these objectives will stay the same for the five years of this plan. And as far as teaching and learning is concerned, we're continuing to align the K-12 curriculum vertically and horizontally, that's between grade levels and across grade levels, from kindergarten through grade twelve. We are committed to hire and retain highly qualified staff, and we're using data to improve student learning outcomes. So, those three objectives guide the work that we do over the five years. As you know, last year was the first year of this particular continuous improvement plan. So, this year, we're in year two. So, I thought it would be important for you to see how the budget that we're currently in this year is supporting the work of teaching and learning. So, in year two, we're continuing to work on our common assessments. You've already heard for the, about the implementation of foundations in grade two. You just had a chance to hear about No Atom in grade four. And the middle school science program is still in process. They're taking a look at multiple materials and deciding what is next for the middle school science program. You also know that we're working on the educator evaluation tool. Last year, we started data team training, we're expanding data team training from English, Language Arts, and Mathematics to Science and Social Studies this year. And as you know, due to the hard work of dedicating precious funds in the budget, we were able to significantly reduce the middle school study halls this year. So, that's what's taking place under teaching and learning in year two. The next major strategy area is student support services. These are the three objectives that are guiding the work that we're doing under student support services. We're developing in-district programming that meets the needs of all of our students. We are designing professional development for our educators, so that we can implement a comprehensive instructional model in all schools. And we're creating a consistent instructional process that focuses on student learning to measure individual student progress. So, in year two, what are we doing in the area of student support services? Last year, as you know, we had an outside evaluation of our current services that are provided under student services through the pupil personnel office. The Walker Evaluation Partners came in and they created this outside evaluation for us. There were no surprises in that evaluation, but it provided a set of objective eyes to take a look at what we're currently offering and how can we improve in these areas. So, we're expanding programs and services this year. We implemented a postgraduate program after grade twelve for those students who are eligible to continue to receive services. We're working on co-teaching in the district, each school is implementing a co-teaching model. We are taking a look at our language-based programs and improving those. Patty Bullard came in and gave you a presentation of how we're improving our language-based program. And we're taking a look at the social, emotional, and behavioral aspects of what we're doing now to meet the needs of our students, and how can we improve by implementing new programs, possibly for next year. We're also defining entrance and exit criteria. As you know, we restructured our evaluation team chairperson, so we hired one person based on the budget that was allocated for this year. And to that one person is overseeing all of the elementary team, the team meetings. And then we restructured Patricia Bullard and Martha Croll's positions to oversee the middle school and the high school. Professional development is key to the success of anything that we do in student support services. We're also exploring our Massachusetts tiered system of support. You may have heard of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking right now, the response to intervention. And we have varying degrees of response to intervention in each one of our schools to provide support to students who may need it, or the ability to excel those students, or accelerate those students that are ready to move forward. So, what we're doing is we're taking a look at the Massachusetts tiered system of support to equalize that process across the school district this year. And the final major strategy area is technology integration. Again, same three objectives for the five years, to hire and retain highly qualified technology staff, develop a shared technology vision, and to enhance the technology infrastructure. So, what are we doing in the year two? Well, as you know, we hired a technology technician this year. We're taking a look at our library media program and how can we better support a twenty-first century education. We're providing lots of professional development in the area of technology integration. Our whole, full professional development day on January second was devoted in part to teachers teaching teachers. How are our teachers, who are using a high number of new innovations in the classroom, able to teach their colleagues how to use that in their classrooms? And for an example, we have the iPad initiative, it's in its second year of implementation. And you just saw Beth Lovett use the iPad to produce some of the videos that you saw today. We're also taking a look at identifying new middle school and high school technology courses. We have the robotics course that's being offered at the middle school, we're looking to expand that next year. And the high school is already looking at developing computer programming courses. Principal John Bernard came and explained that to you when he proposed his new courses for next year. We're identifying digital learning benchmarks, this is very important. These are benchmarks that are national, and we're making sure that they're in place for grades four, eight, and twelve. And we're putting into place those kinds of activities that students need to engage in, in order to become proficient at those benchmarks in grades four, eight, and twelve. As you know, we're purchasing and supporting new hardware and software across the district, and we continue to work to improve our wireless infrastructure. And this is just a snapshot, as you know, of one page of the action plan. It gives you an idea of what it looks like. We have the major strategy at the top, we have our theory of action, we have our strategic objective. And then, year by year, we have strategic initiatives that align with all of the work that's being done across the district, and we have this for each of the three major strategy areas. So, as you know, with all of the work that's put into developing a budget from one year to the next, it's important in the execution of a strategy to align our precious resources to that strategy. And in doing so, it forces us to make difficult decisions about allocating limited resources. So, early on in the budget process, the school committee charged the superintendent to develop a budget for the next school year. And at a recent school committee meeting, you charged the director of finance and operations and me to come and present to you what's considered a modified level services budget. And what that means is, all expense side of the budget will be level funded, and we've done that for at least the last five years, which means that the amount of funds that were dedicated to expenses last year will remain the same for the next school year. were dedicated to expenses last year will remain the same for the next school year. The modified level services piece means that we will present to you a budget that provides the same programs and services for the next school year as is being provided this school year. So very soon, in the budget development process, we will be coming to you with the preliminary budget. This multi-year strategic budget vision is over and above what's included in the preliminary budget that will be presented to you. We know that resources are very tight, but it's also very important for us to maintain the vision and present to you what it will take in order to move this budget vision forward. So what I'm going to present to you now is what we are proposing for next year and then in two years following. This is an overview of what we're proposing for FY14. This is the multi-year strategic budget vision. On the left-hand side of this table, you'll see the strategies that I've just referred to. If you move to the next column, you'll see what the proposal is, and then you'll see each of the three years remaining on the strategic budget, NRPS 2016, FY14, 15, and 16. So let's take this category by category, and then I'll take you through each category more specifically. And again, tonight is an overview. So under technology integration, we are proposing to restore and increase technology staff and administrative support. Next year, we're proposing that cost to be $136,512. The next particular major category proposal involves three strategy, three strategy areas: teaching and learning, student services, and technology and integration. And as you can see, what we are proposing is to restore and increase professional development funds. Any and all initiatives require a significant amount of professional development if we are going to implement a new initiative with fidelity. And so we are proposing a $13,900 increase to professional development for next year. And finally, the last proposal is an increase in textbook adoption funds, and this follows the teaching and learning particular strategy. So let's take a look at what it means in year three to increase the technology staff and administrative support. What we're proposing is hiring a 1.0 digital learning specialist for approximately $48,000. This would restore one of the positions that had been previously in place in this district about four or five years ago. Right now, we have one technology integration specialist. You'll notice that the terminology is changing. In the literature in the field, no longer are they called strictly technology integration specialists. They're now called digital learning specialists because it's not just about integrating a software or a piece of hardware. It's about how do we use those tools so that students access content that they are learning in their content areas, and they're using a digital modality. And so now, though, the terminology is digital learning specialist. They do so much more. So we'd like to be able to bring one of those digital learning specialists back for approximately $48,000. And we would deploy that person across the elementary schools and move Joanne into the middle school and high school. These proposals are also preparing us for the increased amount of technology that will become available to us in the middle school and high school as a result of the building project. In addition, we are proposing hiring an Assistant Director of Digital Learning. This is an administrative position, and we are proposing this as we think about the demands of bringing online additional pieces of technology, as well as responding to some of the mandates that have been coming to us through the Department of Education. As you know, over the last several years, there has been a significant increase in the amount of data that we need to report to the Department of Education on an annual basis. We have EPIMS, we have SIMS, we have CIF. All of these are acronyms for data that is linking our student achievement to courses that they're taking in the classroom and linking it to the teachers that are teaching them that content. And this is data that's collected annually through the Department of Ed, along with other annual reports that have been submitted regularly over the years. And right now, Carl Nelson has played a key role in submitting a lot of that data to the Department of Education. And as we know, Carl will be leaving us at the end of this school year. So as we plan ahead for expanding the supports and the services that we have currently in the district, we're looking to take some of the responsibility that Patrick Daly has regarding the oversight of technology integration on digital learning and moving that to an Assistant Director of Digital Learning. We currently have this kind of a format in place. If you think about pupil personnel services, we have a Director of Pupil Personnel Services. And we also have an Assistant Director, who has some of the responsibilities of overseeing a certain part of the program that Patty Bullard manages as the Director of Pupil Personnel. So we were going to call this an Assistant Director of Academic Services because we really want to focus the work of this person on digital learning for next year. So when you add the two together, you'll see a total increase of, excuse me, $136,512. In year three, we're looking to increase professional development funds. We know that in implementing No Adam in grade five, we need to provide some additional professional development, and so we've identified the cost to be $2,500. The implementation of grade-three foundations is a little more extensive in that the consultant comes into the classroom, observes teachers in all of the classrooms that are newly implementing the program, holds meetings with those teachers, talks about what she sees, she models classes, she provides feedback, and then she comes back and observes them again. That is a pretty extensive professional development program, but we're talking about a literacy professional development program. And so we want it to be extensive because we know literacy is the foundation of all content that we teach at the elementary school. So we think this is money well spent, and the total increase would be $13,900 for next year. Finally, as we take a look at an increase to the textbook adoption funds, to implement No Adam in grade five, it will cost $33,248. And to implement foundations in grade three, it will cost $17,186. Now, the total increase comes to $50,434, but we already have $25,451 budgeted for textbook adoption. So the balance between the total on this page and what we already have available to us comes to a total increase of $24,983. So again, that's a very quick overview of this multi-year strategic budget vision focusing on FY14. It gives you an idea of how what we planned for continuous improvement connects to the budget process. This is what it would cost. It comes to about .7 increase of the total budget, based on the budget that we have in the school district this year. So it's less than a 1% increase. And as we think about this, and keep our eye on the prize, we continue to dream big. Remember, I keep telling you to be audacious. Questions? Yes?
Can you go back to me?
I'll go back.
Thank you. I'm assuming that that are, of course, technology staff, administrative support, that's maintained across 15 and 16, so...
That would be. That would be maintained and absorbed within the budget. So what you're seeing there are increases over and above what would be implemented from one year to the next.
Right, so that was my question.
Okay. I just think that it would be helpful to see the whole context of what the rolling expense came from across the three years.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because once you adopt them for the first year, you've got to incorporate it into the budget.
It's just editorial, but I know what it means. I just want to make sure when I'm looking at this, I don't copy the wrong number and pick it up in the wrong way. But I really think that's amazing.
I think this is all stuff we need to do. I also think that as we continue to talk about technology and the other ways that education is changing, that we need to start being more creative as a committee and you as the administrative team in terms of looking at the budget and how we put the budget together. And I think we need, you know, some people might want to hear this, but I think we need to figure out, there may be some things we don't need anymore because of what we're doing with technology. So I think we have to, if we're going to think about a 21st century education, I think we also have to think about 21st century budgeting. And I know that, you know, this, we're still in the bottom third in this state in terms of per pupil expenditures, and I think we get a tremendous bang for the dollar in this school system. But I also think that we need to balance off the new that we want to bring in with maybe some of the old that we don't need anymore. And I also think, and you will do this, I know, we have to take a close look at our declining enrollment and how that may impact the number of teachers we need, especially, I think, in the elementary and the primary grades moving forward. So I support all of this, but I think we need to be creative and looking how to fit it into the budget.
And that's how we were able to reduce the study halls at the middle school for this year. We didn't add any additional funding. We took a look at what we were doing and how to move some of those funds around in order to make that happen because that was a priority of this community.
Any other questions? Comments? Karen?
I just wonder why the professional development proposal is so low. I see this is very low in terms of your ask, so I'm wondering, is this just because you're being conservative, or is there something more you want to do?
Well, it's low, it's in addition to what we already have budgeted. So this would be over and above, and we're trying to connect any additional funds to initiatives that we have in NRPS 2016. So again, we're trying to be conservative in our request, but we recognize that it does indicate an increase if we're moving forward with implementing new programs and services in the student services category, if we're bringing in any kind of new curriculum in the third, fourth, and fifth year. But we already have a line item for professional development, so we're trying to be as frugal as we can.
I just, going back to your objectives, particularly in student services, I'm worried that is a, it's still, knowing what our professional development budget line item is, which is low to begin with, that I'm just concerned that we're not going to be able to meet those objectives, so I, maybe...
I appreciate that.
Thinking it through a little bit more. I remember, you know, hearing the outside evaluator talking through some of these issues, and I still think that we need to prioritize that aspect of our, of our increased budget request, so I don't know if the committee has the same perception.
I think when we go over the, when we get the budget presented to us in a couple of weeks or a month, whenever that's going to be, we'll be able to look more into that. But that's been a key issue for me, too, if we're going to bring out. And I think we've done a great job with the training the teachers and teachers training the teachers in using the new technology, especially what they've done with the iPad, where the teachers have taught other teachers how to use and make good use of that in their, in their lesson plans.
It's a train-the-trainer model that we try to capitalize on, but there comes a point in time where you do need to bring in the experts.
I think we've done a great job of this trainer, training, teaching the teachers down the line, and we've gotten much more bang for our buck out of our professional development dollars in...
Oh, yeah.
In the last couple of years, it's big improvement.
I'm just shutting this down in preparation for the next...
Anything else? All right, thanks. Should I stay here?
Yes, I think I should stay there.
I've been removed. All right, thank you, Kathy, that was great.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Joanne Lainer, Leonard?
Lainer.
Lainer and Jennifer Vant, and they are representing Citizens for Equality and Athletics here in...
Actually, we're supporting Citizens for Equality.
Okay, we're supporting Citizens for Equality.
Thank you.
And they have, they have held a couple of meetings in town, and they, they request to be on the agenda tonight to discuss some issues, and I will let, we will let them present tonight.
Please.
And we will have, if there are any questions, comments from the committee. I'd like to, I don't think we're going to solve the issue tonight, but it's good for us to all know what they're bringing to the table and the issues that we have to consider moving forward. So whenever you're ready, just go right ahead.
All right. Mel already introduced me. I'm Jennifer Vant, and I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're here to discuss, as Mel briefly touched on, events in town surrounding inequality we think is going on, that is going on. And it's has to do with the new secondary school project and the softball field being on campus at that new site. I'd like to start by saying, you know, we as a group and individuals are very excited with what the town has decided to do with the new state-of-the-art buildings that we're doing for the kids. We think it's great, we think it's ripe, and we appreciate all the work you've done and that the Secondary School Building Committee has done in this project. It's an amazing project. I think everyone is aware of the background that we voted back in March, you know, super majority, and then we had the town meeting and everything was approved, and that on the initial plans, which I realize were just a outline concept, thank you, that there was a softball field on it to be added at the new, at the new site. And then at some point in late August or early September, the SSBC voted to get rid of that softball field from the site, and it was done on recommendation of this committee after the principal and the athletic director put forth the recommendations of the athletic director and the two varsity coaches for baseball and softball. So we understand that there will be a field currently at the high school that was a second baseball field that will no longer be at the new high school if the softball field goes in. And we understand that the boys having another field, that concern is a real one, but if there's only room for either a second baseball field or a first softball field, the choice on a fairness level and a legal level, which we're going to discuss in a moment, is clear. It has to be a softball field. It's time, you know, that the baseball, the boys' baseball team and the girls' softball team share the burden of, you know, everyone not being able to play at the campus just because of physical limitations, that there's only so much land and only so much usable land. There's other, you know, like, as I was saying, we understand that the boys probably need another place to play, and our recommendation would be to convert an existing softball field in town as an additional field for the boys. I believe besides the little school fields, there are four other fields: Chestnut Complex, Mullin, Ipswich River, and Town Hall. So the suggestion would be to change one of those from a softball to a baseball field for when the boys need additional practice or even JV freshman playing fields. So now I'd like to turn to an overview, sorry, an overview of the law. So what is Title? What is Title IX? Title IX is a federal law, but later on, I will also address state law that we have that discuss why the softball field needs to be at the high school. Title IX prohibits federally funded educational institutions from discriminating on the basis of sex. It states, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. As a result of Title IX, any school that receives any federal money, whether directly or indirectly, from an elementary to a university level," in short, pretty much all schools, including ours, "must provide fair and equal treatment to the sexes in all areas, including athletics. Congress enacted Title IX in response to its finding of pervasive discrimination against women with respects to educational opportunities. The goal of Title IX was to avoid, was to avoid the use of federal resources to support discriminatory practices and to provide individual citizens effective protection against those practices. Before Title IX, there were few opportunities for female athletes. Facilities, supplies, and fundings were lacking for women's teams. As a result, in 1972, there were just 295,000 females competing in high school sports as compared to 3.5 million males. Title IX was designed and enacted to correct those imbalances. Although it doesn't require that women's athletic receive the same amount of money as men's athletics, it is designed to enforce equal access and quality. Women's and men's programs are required to devote the same resources to locker rooms, medical treatment, training, coaches, practice times, travel, per diem allowances, equipment, practice facilities, tutoring, and recruitment. Since the enactment of Title IX, women's participation in sports has grown exponentially. In high school, the number of girl athletes has increased from the $295,000 figure of 1972 to more than 3.2 million. But in that same amount of time, boys have increased to 4.5 million." But, in that same amount of time, boys have increased to 4.5 million. Any school that receives any federal funds must provide equal treatments to male and female students, including athletic benefits and opportunities. In the 2010-11 school year, North Reading received $1.6 million in federal funds. So, clearly, North Reading is subject to Title IX. So, how does Title IX work? First off, it does not require quotas, as many people think. There's two separate parts of Title IX. The first is that the schools must provide an equal opportunity for both males and female students to play sports. The second part of Title IX requires fair, fair treatment of male and female athletes. So, let's turn to the first part, which is a three-prong test. Title IX requires that a school demonstrate that one of three prongs has been met in order to show that they have met the requirement of providing equal opportunity for girls to play. The first prong says that if the percentage of male and female athletes is, has to be proportionate to the percentage of male and female students enrolled. So, for example, say you have 50% females and 50% males as your student body, and 45% of the boys play a sport, then about 45% of the girls should be playing sports as well. Prong two says that the school has to have a history and a continuing practice of expanding the interests and abilities of the underrepresented sex. It says, "History alone is not enough," and that the school has to show a continuing practice as well. The third prong says that the athletic program fully and effectively accommodates the interests and abilities of the underrepresented sex, and that if girls are not playing sports at a comparative rate to boys, they're choosing not to. It's not because they haven't been afforded an equal opportunity. Then there's the second part of Title IX. And this needs to be complied with even if the school can meet one of the three prongs. This is the equal treatment requirement, and it exists under Title IX despite and in addition to the three-prong test. This part of Title IX says a school can still be in violation of Title IX if male and female players receive unequal treatment. The Office for Civil Rights, which is a federal agency in charge of enforcing Title IX, defines, "Equal rights treatment to require equivalence in the availability, quality, and kinds of other athletic benefits and opportunities provided to male and female athletes." So, what does this mean to us? How do we apply Title IX to North Reading High School's current situation? Our town's violations don't go to the three-prong test, but instead go to the requirement that the school treat girls and boys equally. Title IX requires equality in equipment and supplies, scheduling of games and practice times, travel, and the provision of locker rooms, practice facilities, in, in, and the provision of locker room, practice facilities, and competitive facilities, all being equal. A disparity in one program component, for example, the scheduling of games and practice times, alone can constitute a Title IX violation. So, that leaves us with, with the real argument and issues we have with the S S B C's decision and the reality of the current baseball softball field situation in our town. The North Reading Girl Softball Team has clearly not received equal tre, treatment. The original site fa, site plan finally did afford the girls softball, um, equal facilities by locating them, uh, by locating at least their competitive field at North Reading High School, where it would have access to locker rooms and bathrooms for the first time in at least the past 12 years. The decision to eliminate the softball field from the high school plan continues the existing violation of Title IX law. Title IX has a smell test, and the smell test of Title IX says, you go up to your local high school and you compare the boys' baseball facilities to the girls' softball facilities. If we do that, we can't, because the facilities are nowhere to be found. They're two and a half miles away. The girls' softball teams are required to practice and play at the little school fields, which are two and a half miles away. The school does not provide transportation or reimburse for any travel expenses. Conversely, every member of the boys' baseball team can practice at the two facilities currently on, on campus. The boys' on-campus facilities have access to locker rooms, restrooms, a batting cage, and a water source, each of which are lacking at the little school's softball fields. Courts have found that Title IX violations exist where boys' locker rooms were painted in school colors and the girls weren't. It said it didn't afford the girls the same feeling of being part of the school and thus discriminated against them, even though the boys' parents were the ones who came in and painted the locker rooms. Other cases found that Title IX viol, was violated because the girls' basketball team had locker rooms further from the court, and they didn't let out into the main court, but they let out into an auxiliary court. And the boys' locker rooms were right next to the court and let, and let out directly to them. And they said that was discriminatory. Uh, the recent case of Alier versus Sweetwater Union High School was brought on behalf of a class of plaintiffs which comprised of present, future, and potential female students at that school. The plaintiffs alleged that the school district discriminated against female athletes in viol, in violation of Title IX. They said that the discrimin, the discrimination was with respects to practice and competitive facilities, locker rooms, travel and transportation, and scheduling of practice times. After a 10-day trial, the court found that the school was discriminating against the girls' softball team in violation of Title IX because the facilities were inferior to the boys' baseball facilities. The court stated that male and female athletes are required under Title IX to have access to the same quality facilities on the same basis, including practice and competitive facilities. The court further stated, "The locker room, practice, and competitive facilities provided to female athletes are unequal as compared to the locker room, practice, and competitive facilities provided to male athletes." This means that if the boys' baseball competitive facilities are on campus with access to locker rooms and other such amenities, then the girls' softball facilities need to be on campus with access to the same amenities. So, O, O, Alier explicitly states that locker rooms are inadequate if locker rooms are located off-campus. North Reading High School's current softball field at the little school do not have any locker rooms or even a restroom available for use by the girls of the softball team. The high school baseball fields do have a locker room and restrooms available for, for use by the bo, boys' team next to the practice and competitive facilities. Alier found that the softball facility was inferior to the baseball facility because the baseball facility consisted of a batting cage and was fully enclosed with re, which restricted its use from any other use and prevented damage from use and overuse. North Reading High School softball field doesn't have a batting cage. It's not fully enclosed, and it's not restricted from any other use. It's used extensively by the little school. North Reading High School baseball field does have a batting cage. It is fully con, enclosed, and it is protected from overuse. And one, uh, one current illustration is that, um, of, of the fields being treated in equally is that it, the, uh, baseball field currently is tarp for the winter and the softball field doesn't. Another one is that the baseball field, uh, receives irrigation, um, seeding, and the softball field doesn't. Also, they allow the baseball booster club to improve the field, and nobody's allowed to touch the softball field. And we have been told on numerous occasions not to try to make improvements on their own. Um, Alier determined that girls and boys are required under Title IX to have the same optimum practice times. It further stated that immediately after school is the most desirable practice time for sports. In our school district, the softball fields are not available for use by the girls' softball team until after the little school releases for the day at 3:10. That's over an hour after the high school releases its students. Conversely, the baseball fields are available for use by the, by the boys' baseball team immediately after the release of the school day. In other words, compliance with Title IX requires that male and female athletes have access to the same quality facilities on the same base, basis. Alier specifically held, "The quality, size, and location of the locker rooms were better for the male athletes than the female athletes at the high school. The boys' facilities also are better maintained and protected from damage and overuse. And the disparities concerning locker rooms, practice, and comp, competition facilities are disadvantages to female athletes." These same violations, as we just discussed, exist at North Reading High School. It's important to remember a couple of more, more things in regards to Title IX law. All money and in-kind contributions that are received with respects to a particular athletic activity, regardless of the source, are subject to Title IX requirements, including donations from booster clubs and other outside sources. A school may accept funding, outside funding, but if it does, the school must make sure that such additional money does not benefit one sex over the other. If it does, the school is responsible to bear the bor, burden and the cost of supplying equal improvements to the other sex. A school can evade its responsibility to treat its male and female athletes equally by pointing to an outside source, causing the unequal treatment. Courts have determined that, once a school receives a monetary donation, the fund becomes public money, subject to Title IX's legal obligations in their use. For example, what if a baseball booster club purchases lights for the baseball field, but there's no lights at the softball field? The school system must provide lights at the softball field or refuse the donation. Uh, another example, what if outside money is donated to build a dugout at the baseball field, and there's no dugouts at the softball field? Again, the school must provide dugouts at the softball field or refuse the outside donation. Uh, what if the baseball team wins a championship and rings are donated or a trip is provided by outside sources of money, and the softball team later wins a championship? The school system must be prepared to provide equal rewards to the softball team in the event of the championship or refuse the original donation. Remember, the U.S. Supreme Court has held that Title IX can be enforced through a private right of action. Any citizen may seek the assistance of the court or the Office for Civil Rights in ass, in assuring that equal athletic opportunities are provided to both male and female athletes. Remedies include injunctive relief, monetary damages, punitive damages, damages, and attorney's fees. There's no requirement that those making the decision, which results in a discriminatory outcome, did so with an intent to discriminate. The decision-makers can have a litany of rational reasons for making the decision. But, if the end result discriminates against one sex over the other, it's in violation of Title IX. Allowing male baseball athletes to play and practice at the high school and requiring female softball athletes to play and practice elsewhere violates Title IX. A Title IX plaintiff would have significant resources, um, at their assistance, if, it, which would include the Office for Civil Rights, which has a Boston branch, and the National Women's Law Center in Washington, D.C. Remember, it's important to note that you cannot waive compliance with Title IX. No one can. It's a legal right. It's not negotiable. It's not subject to waiver. You can't say it's unfair that the softball team has to play off-campus, but there's not enough room for everyone, and everybody agrees it's okay, and it's easier just to make all the softball players leave campus than also burden the baseball players with leaving campus. No one has the right to consent or agree to something that violates any law, and that includes Title IX. So, who's responsible for making sure Title IX has been complied with in a town? The courts have stated that the school committee is responsible, the superintendent, the principal, and anyone he, um, uh, might delegate to, like the athletic director, and the Title IX coordinator for the town. Alier states, "Equal athletic treatment is not a luxury. It's not a luxury to grant equivalent benefits and opportunities to women. It's not a luxury to comply with the law." Equality and justice are not luxuries. They are essential elements which are woven into the very fiber of this country. They are essential elements now codified under Title IX. One final legal consideration. We live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We've enacted an equal rights law, Chapter 93, Section 102. This law applies in addition to Title IX and concurrently with Title IX. However, unlike Title IX, the equal rights law is a civil rights law, and that means the court applies strict scrutiny, the highest of judicial reviews. This means Massachusetts protect, provides protections that go even further than Title IX. It would be impossible to explain how something so blatantly unequal to one sex as opposed to the other passes this strict scrutiny test. Also, I've spoken with the National Women's Law Center in Washington, D.C. Title IX is what they do, day in and day out. They know it forwards, they know it backwards. They told me, I could quote them as saying, that what is going on in our town is, and I quote, "A clear violation of Title IX." They said the Boston Office for Civil Rights would investigate a claim based on our facts and would help us in getting the school to comply with Title IX. The National Women's Law Center invites anyone to contact them with questions or obtain information on Title IX. I have some handouts, so I'm going to pass out in, in their website and number on them. To quote the well-respected ex, educator, Dr. Fred Bedell, a dean at Lincoln Memorial University and published author, "If you drive a nail for the boys, you better drive the exact same kind of nail with the exact same kind of hammer in the exact same kind of place for the girls, or you'll be up the well-known creek without a paddle." Simply put, to comply with Title IX and the mass equal rights law, if there's a baseball field at the high school, there must be a softball field on campus as well. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, as I said, we're not, um, we're not going to solve the problem tonight. I appreciate you coming in and very well, uh, thought out presentation, very well researched. However, I will, uh, if any of the committee has any questions or if you have any questions of us, um, superintendent.
I would like to know if I can get a copy of the presentation?
Of the PowerPoint? Yeah, we can give you a copy of the PowerPoint, of course.
And, and obviously, this is something that, um, the school committee will discuss at some point. Not tonight. We have, now that we have your presentation, um, it's obviously something that the administration will work on and will be reviewing. And my recommendation to you and the superintendent can add to this is you be in close touch with the superintendent. I'm sure she will be in touch with you. As you know, we are still reviewing plans for the high school, and that's in a, uh, I don't know what kind of state I was...
State of flux.
State of flux is probably the best way to describe that right now. And, uh, obviously, your concerns and your presentation tonight will be, you know, it'll be something that's considered when we're looking at whatever the final plans of the high school when they take shape.
Of course.
But, as I said, at this point, um, we appreciate you coming in.
I'd only offer, Mr. Chairman, that I, I want to read Alier. It's a 2012 case, obviously, and see if the conclusions that the presenter has draw, have drawn, uh, basically what the case says. I mean, sometimes you can draw conclusions, um, you know, from reading the case. They're not necessarily true, but, uh, the only way I can determine that is by reading the case.
Right. And we do appreciate that. So, if we, if, if the superintendent has the PowerPoint, then she can give us the name of the cases and stuff, and we can do our research on that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's, you know, that's why we approached you. We want, we, we want the town to fix this on their own.
Right.
Yeah, it, it's an important issue, and it's an issue I think that is important for the school committee to be involved with.
Okay.
Can we have a timeframe as to when, um, we would be hearing from them?
Well, we won't receive, we'll achieve 90% contract documents, and, and that is in late February, early March. So, we're still working on the site plans for the project.
Yes.
So...
I would say by March. Isn't it by March we're going to have?
90% documents are complete January 27th. 100% documents are complete February 27th. Uh, this, this field won't be built for, um, until the fall of 2015.
Yes. Yeah, we realize times on our side.
And, and because of the nature of the difference between a softball field and a baseball field, the, the difference in that is small, uh, in, in construction of those fields. So, basically, how long the line is and where the bases are. So, that's something that can be handled by the contractor. You can do that at any time.
That doesn't address the issue, though. Between now and 2015, I'm going to have to say from a practical standpoint, I don't know where you're going with this, but I'm not sure what can be done between now and 2015 if we should even decide that the new field is going to be a softball field. It's just, the site's a construction site right now, as you've observed.
We understand.
So, I'm not sure of what your expectations would be.
You mean as, as, as far as compliance, immediate compliance?
I'm not suggesting we're out of compliance. So, I'm not going to acquiesce to the fact that we're out of compliance. I'm just saying, as to your position on this, I don't know what we can do between now and, obviously, the time that new fields would be built.
Well, we're approaching you, we're approaching you for going forward from...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, again, then...
The new school. We feel like the time's ripe. This is the most cost-efficient time for the town to come in compliance with Title IX. And that's why we're... And that's why we're approaching you now.
Again, we're not, I have to do some research to see if we're out of compliance. I respect your position on this, and I respect your presentation. Very well done, very well thought-out, but I really need to take a look at the law, and then make my determination, and possibly talk to town council as to whether or not we're, as you suggest, out of compliance.
Yeah.
Okay?
So that would, so again, the final plans will be probably in February, but then we have to decide what kind of budget we have to meet those plans, that the final plans turn out to be. And then, as Cliff said, the fields will be built in the fall of 2015.
Yeah, 2015.
Right.
That's the schedule.
There are some things that, obviously, you know, if the decision were not reached tomorrow, then we'd be in a big mess with the contracting process.
Right.
But the difference between, again, a softball field and a baseball field is placement of the bases and the length of the line.
Yeah, they can be changed more last minute.
That's about it. And that's a, that's a weekend project for a couple of handy men and a wheelbarrow.
But to answer your question, I believe your question is, you know, we're not sure between now and then, if we're asking for immediate compliance, we personally are not asking for immediate compliance. It doesn't mean that somebody else in town wouldn't, but we are not.
I just wanna clarify that.
We're asking for compliance in the new project.
Okay.
In the new project going forward.
I only have a question.
Okay, yes.
Of course, please. At the beginning of, before your presentation, you made some recommendations that I didn't see in your presentation, and I wondered if you have a written document that you've shared with either the SSBC, or with us in advance, that sort of says, "This would solve it." I'm not hearing that. I heard the point of view, but I did not hear specifically what you're asking us to consider doing to address compliance.
You didn't hear, or you didn't see it in writing?
I didn't see it in writing. I think it would be helpful if I saw it.
We could produce something in writing, basically what we're asking for.
Actually, it would be helpful if we had that, too.
Yeah, we could produce something that suggested, you know, what I spoke of, which would be an on-campus softball facility with the same amenities that the baseball field has, scoreboards. There's a dedicated batting cage right behind it, I believe, you know, what exactly, access to the concession stand, the fact that it needs to be on-campus to be within use of the locker rooms and the bathrooms. Yes, we could definitely send you a document stating what we think would bring the town into compliance.
I think the level of detail is really important, so that we all are on the same page about understanding what you're sharing with us.
Absolutely. Of course, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Great, thanks for coming.
If I may, I'm not speaking...
Just quickly, go ahead, Al, go ahead.
I'm not speaking on behalf of the school.
If you could just give us your name and your...
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Magner, 19 Door Road. I'm speaking as a little school dad and a father of softball players, that in addition to all these Title IX considerations, I think the little school community ought to be taken into consideration. I know Mrs. Molly regularly gets complaints about the behavior of 16 and 17-year-olds arriving into a parking lot. So that ought to be a consideration in addition to what has been put forward.
Yeah, it's not only Mrs. Molly, it's also, at times, the local police department that also is made aware of those issues, so, but that's another, that's another good point. So appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, great, thanks a lot. Appreciate you coming in, and as I said, we'll be hearing from you from us. It's not gonna disappear at this point.
It's in fact, she's... I just need the last hour.
Last hour.
I know.
I didn't call you in the whole presentation, though.
Good.
Those two different voices.
From the National Women's Law Center.
Let me hold on, let me make sure.
I hope you want to contact them, their information.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate you coming in.
We appreciate the time you put in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
We just want to make sure...
Sit down till she shuts that.
I don't blame you.
Oh.
Don't blame you.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's amazing, I had my new case for my iPad.
You did.
The Apple case cost $40. This one cost $1,299, and this one's better.
This one's better, yeah, I know.
$1,299 versus...
I know, that's why I don't have Apple.
It's unbelievable.
They priced the price that are the...
It's a piece of material that goes over the, it's crazy.
You know, the architect that... That wraps around it, and the bottom part, it's almost a keyboard.
Oh, keyboard, yeah, I saw that, yeah, yeah. Okay, where are we?
Public Vision's...
I think, oh, we're back up to Continued Business. Kathleen, you wanna turn those lights on, or leave them off?
I got it. I got it.
So now we've completed New Business before we started Continued Business. Let's go to the update on the school building project. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you. Since the last school committee meeting in December, I believe it was December 17th, there have been three secondary school building committee meetings. One December 18th, one January 2nd, and one January 8th. On December 18th and January 2nd, the Secondary School Building Committee entered into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to contract review and potential litigation, because to do so in open session could be detrimental to the town, the school district, and the Secondary School Building Committee. The committee continues to work with the architects to reconcile project cost estimates, leading to value engineering strategies aligned with the project budget. On Friday, January 4th, Mr. Venezia, Mr. Bowers, Mr. Webster, Principal Bernard, Principal O'Connell, OPM Jeff Wetton, and the superintendent met to review and categorize identified deferred items as part of the value management process. This exercise was repeated on Saturday, January 5th, with members of the finance planning team. And the purpose of this exercise is just to begin the process of quantifying what additional funds may be needed in order to complete the school building project as originally planned. In addition, a series of important dates leading up to a proposed special town meeting and special election were identified and reviewed by the SSBC at their meeting on January 8th. On Friday, January 4th, a group of abutters to the middle school field indicated a level of concern regarding the removal of more mature trees than they had originally been led to believe. This action was taken as a result of the value engineering process that took place at an SSBC meeting in early September. There is going to be a special SSBC meeting tomorrow night for abutters that will be held in the lodge group room here at the middle school, beginning at 7:00 PM. It will be, there will be other business that the SSBC will be taking up, but there's going to be ample time made available for abutters to attend the meeting and engage in a discussion, as well as a question and answer period. Again, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, middle school lodge group room.
Will there be an SSBC meeting at 5:30 before that, or that will be the time?
That we will...
Okay.
There's no...
So it'll just be 7:00?
Just 7:00.
7:00, I'm sorry, yes, no 5:30. Mr. Venezia and Mr. Bowers, as you know, sit on the SSBC, so at this time, I'm not sure if they want to make any additional comments before I move on to talk about other items.
The...
The only thing I was gonna say is, the Secondary School Building Committee continues to work very, very hard, along with the school administration, to keep this project moving forward. That's our objective, not to delay, not to lose time, and to move this project forward on schedule. And the budgetary circumstances, we're continuing to try to deal with those.
In the interest of making sure that when we do go back to the town for additional funding, that it's the right amount of money, that we're only going one time, the SSBC has determined, based on an offer by Gilbain, to give us a 90% level, or a guaranteed maximum price, based on the 90% drawings. And they will add an additional contingency to that, and they suggest that we add an additional contingency, because some things are not as clearly defined at 90% as they are at 100%, obviously. The guaranteed maximum price will be provided to us in early March in a draft form. The final will be available on the 11th of March. To the, for those who don't know about what a guaranteed maximum price is, it is the, a number provided by the construction manager that will not be exceeded. If that number includes all of their subcontractors and all of their materials, in the case of a GMP provided at 90%, they will not have had all of their subcontractors even bid at that point. That's why there's a little extra contingency in there. That sounds like it may end up by costing us more money. It actually will not. The numbers will probably be very similar to if they had gone the whole way out to 100%. So we will have a firm number at that point. Any funds that they put into the guaranteed maximum price that are not expended to buy out equipment, or subcontractors, or materials, all of the, any funds beyond that will be turned back to the town. So if the contingency is more than is needed, then we will get that returned back to us as the end of the project.
Hey Cliff, what happened to our original contingency?
I'm sorry?
Built into the budget?
That's still in there.
This is an addition.
There's already a contingency. We have a contingency, and Gilbain has a contingency. This is a premium contingency, if you will.
To compensate for the differential between 90% and 100% construction documents. If we have to wait for 100% construction documents, it's gonna delay the project, and it's gonna cost us additional funds.
This is a critical, critical part of our project. The key is that we need to be able to move ahead on the project by the 1st of April. Gilbain needs to be able to move ahead, and hire subcontractors, and continue the construction process at that point. We already have some early work being done, so we're not in a schedule problem with, because of that, we're not in a schedule problem now. As we move forward, though, April 1st is kind of a critical date, and we need to be able to tell them to move ahead, and what they're going to move ahead on at that time.
I'm not sure I quite understand, because the $9 to $12 million shouldn't keep us from moving on.
It's not. We are moving on right now.
No.
We're still...
What will happen?
Well, no, if we don't approve, we're moving on right now, but if we don't get approval by April 1st of additional money, then we have to sit down and tell them everything to take out of the project.
Right.
Right, but we can still continue to build the building.
Well, it might delay it, because...
Well, what could delay it is, again, if we have to wait for that 100% construction documents to get a final price from the contractor, that could delay the project. So what we're doing is we're trading off, taking, getting a final price at 90%, but, correct me, Cliff, if I'm wrong, kind of building in an insurance policy for the contractor and for us, by increasing the contingency, so that that figure, if it goes up from 90 to 100, we're covered. Because the contractor's not gonna buy the project unless he's certain of the price. So he's, I don't wanna say they're doing us a favor, but they're coming in and giving us the price at 90% construction documents instead of 100%.
If they waited to the 100% documents, we wouldn't be moving ahead until sometime in, probably around the 1st of July.
It'd be a six-month delay, right, at least?
That would trip a wire. What would happen, then, is we would not...
The infrastructure can still be built with a $9 to $12 million contingency not approved to get to that 90% construction.
There are...
There's certain things we can't do until he locks in on the price.
Right. The difficulty with going beyond the April 1st date to move ahead, is that if we do that, we will not be able to move into the new high school in September of 2014. If we can't move, or project even, to move into the high school at that time, we won't be able to start the work in the middle school until we do, which will be then January. And that will result in about a six-month time of continuing of construction, which is worth about $3 million in premium, that we get nothing for, except time. And we need to avoid that. There are elements within the deferred scope that are deferable. In other words, you can move them ahead and bolt them on. It's the wallpaper that's gone, you know, the floor tile is gone. You can put those in later. You can put those in after you occupy, even. There are some elements that are much more efficient and effectively bought as a part of the normal construction process. And there are a couple of items, one of them being the district office that's in that deferable item, and that needs to be decided early. And if it is not decided early, it won't be able to be included within the package. So the thing that we need to do is to understand that the process is such that we are able to move ahead. We're fortunate that we went with a construction management approach. We can still complete on schedule, and if we are able to get approval of the community for the additional funds, we'll be able to deliver the same school that they thought that they were gonna buy in the beginning. But we need to, we need to do that. We need to have their help at this point to complete it. The other thing to keep in mind is that the cost of the project, the final cost of the project, even though we started out with what appears to be a bad estimate, the cost of the project is not going to be any more than it would have been had we had the right estimate in the beginning. It's just gonna cost us the same amount of money as it would have if we'd had the right estimate in the beginning.
Right, but that's, that's...
No, it's an increase, I mean, it's an increase.
It's an increase.
We're paying more, right.
It's an increase.
But we should have, if we had had the right estimate at the beginning...
Unfortunately, we didn't.
I understand, but now you're asking, theoretically, you're asking the town for 20% more?
Well, it's not 20%.
Well, we don't have any idea how much it is at this point, Mike.
If it's 50 million, and we're in the $12...
Oh, right, right, oh, but the town, of the towns, right. I just wanted to, I'm not a member of the SSBC, but I play one on television, no, but I attend most meetings, and as the chairman of the school committee, I just wanted to say a few things. One, $20 million has already been committed for this project, in terms of bids that have been awarded. The bid for concrete, the bid for steel, the bid for site work. We've already spent between $6 and $7 million on the project. So for us to stop now would be, it would be difficult with all that money already committed. And as Cliff said, if we, the way we're proceeding now, we're at least assured, even if we don't get a town vote, we'll probably still be able to have the project completed in time, but it won't be the project that we had hoped it would be.
The one element that is, is a very serious element in the additional funding that we need, is the district office.
The district office, right, right. So I've heard some, I've heard over the last week, and I know a lot of people are frustrated, the SSBC's frustrated, but I've heard people throw around the word mismanagement. There hasn't been any mismanagement here. This committee, the SSBC, and the school committee, and the selectmen, were given a number by professionals that we hired to come up with that number. We then put that number on a ballot, in good faith, believing that the number that they gave us was the number we'd build the project for. It's come to our attention that there, you know, the budget, the estimate should have been higher. Unfortunately, none of us in this room, or really the SSBC, was, you know, is competent enough to say, "Hey, wait a minute, that number's wrong, it should be $10 million more." And that's why you hire the professionals. The other thing I've heard, I've heard it called the Taj Mahal, a palace. It's not. We, I mean, in fact, right now, based on what we value engineered out of the project, it's far from a Taj Mahal or a palace. There aren't any extras in this school, and that, the MSBA wouldn't allow that anyway. I mean, they measure every square foot in the gym, every square foot in the auditorium, every seat in the auditorium, every, they look at every material you're putting in the school. So it's not a Taj Mahal, and it's appropriate buildings for the kids in this town, for middle school and high school.
A little more on that, on that point, there was a meeting with the MSBA, where they made us come back with a discussion about why we were 250, 250 feet difference between where we are now and where we started. between where we are now and where we started on a two hundred and seventy thousand square foot building.
Right.
And we had to explain that difference so that they in fact do watch the project.
They won't let you build a Taj Mahal. The, the other thing I want to explain is, we've heard, you probably heard a lot about this value engineering. There's really been, and Cliff and Jerry and Kathy, and you can comment here, there's been two, there's been two stages of value engineering in this project. The first was the, kind of the normal value engineering you go through. You look at the walls and the contractor and the, and the original plan had X, Y, Z for a wall. Or ti, you know, tiles in the bathroom and tiles. And then you look at that and you say, well, we really don't need that. How much does it cost? What do you save? So that's kind of the building process. You're looking at the materials you're going to put in. That's the normal process. But then we've gone into the second level, which is cutting things out of the project.
To meet the budget.
To meet the budget that need to be in the project. There's a lot of things that have been cut out. And that's what Cliff and Kathy and Jerry and I and the OPM and the principal of the high school and middle school met about last week. And then there was a finance planning team meeting the day after to go over all the things we recommended putting back in.
I think if we can back up just a little bit in, as we moved from August, late August through September and October, the SSBC worked hard at trying to find ways to reduce the cost to fit the budget. And about the, right around Thanksgiving time, I personally came to the conclusion that we, it wasn't going to fit and that we needed to go back to the town.
But we certainly went through the exercise.
Everyone in the room said, no way. And they came back after Thanksgiving and they agreed that we had, we had a situation where we were destroying the project to meet the budget. And that wasn't a rational thing to do. We'd end up with something that nobody liked and we'd be unhappy we spent all their money on that. So we then looked into what is it that we can do to reduce the cost to meet the, the construction number that we had to meet in order to be able to continue moving ahead on the project? The eighty-six point four million dollar construction cost. And so we, we worked hard at getting below that for the purpose of being able to tell MSBA we had a way to keep down to that number. And then we looked at what is it that we can defer in the system? And that went to the extent of removing the rubber treads on the stairs and removing the vinyl tile off the floor and leaving it with just plain concrete. Not polished con, plain concrete that you could put vinyl tile on at some point in the future. Removing some lighting and, and the basketball hoops. I mean, and things that we know need to be in the project. We know clearly that they need to be in the project. But they are things that if nobody gives, if town doesn't give us any more money, we still can build the project without them and then come and bolt those on later. We can add those in later or at a later stage of the construction. The right way to do it is for us to have additional funding, include those items in to the GMP, include them in the filed sub bids that are going to be done by Gil Bane's operation in April and May and, and get the project done on schedule and the right way, all integrated and, and competitive. That's the way to do it.
The bottom line is Cliff mentioned, we're fortunate that we had a construction manager at risk on this project because if we didn't, we wouldn't be finding out these things until the project was, like they have in Andover right now, the project is half built and they need to come up with another twenty percent.
Finish it.
To finish the project. At least we know ahead of time and the town can make, you know, the town can make a decision. We can build this school with the current budget. It's going to have a lot of things missing that should be in this school. But we can build it with the current budget.
And, and we're going to have scheduled information meetings. I think those will be out very soon.
Yes.
We're going to have meetings where we can provide the public with information, tell them why we're under budgeted, how we can resolve it and, and let people ask questions and vent if they need to vent. Again, you know, if I had to sum it up in one sentence, we underestimated the cost of the project based on the twenty percent design documents we had back in January, February, March. You know, it's simple as that. I mean, there's no other big smoking gun here. That's, that's what it comes down to.
And there has been a number that's been tossed around. Michael mentioned it tonight. It's been in the paper. I've talked about it, of nine to twelve million.
We don't know that number yet.
However, we've been, you know, we've been warned by the professionals on the project to not give any numbers at this time.
Till we have a solid number.
Till we have a solid number.
The, the last estimate we have is based on sixty percent drawings.
Right.
And the, the next estimate we have that's based on ninety percent drawings won't be out until late February, practically at the time that we're going to be seeing the guaranteed maximum price, which is the real number. That's, that's not an estimate anymore. That's the number.
So that's where we stand. Any other committee want to comment or ask questions?
So as we go through this process, at the last SSBC meeting, there were dates that were discussed around a proposed special town meeting date and a proposed special election date. And so the Board of Selectmen have requested that the school committee join them on January twenty eighth at six o'clock PM in the town hall in room fourteen to have a joint Board of Selectmen School Committee meeting to vote a proposed date for a town meeting and a town election. Once that vote takes place, there will be a series of informational forums that will be available for members of the community to hear from members of the secondary school building committee about the process leading up to this point, to gain some additional general information, to engage in a question and answer period, and then to talk about what the financial impact will be once we have that final guaranteed maximum price of the project. So we will be releasing those informational dates once this joint Board of Selectmen School Committee meeting takes place, and that's in two weeks, unless the SSBC decides to release those dates earlier. But we do have a meeting next Tuesday and they'll be having conversations about that. In addition, there, the Board of Selectmen is requesting a joint meeting with the school committee and the SSBC on March eleventh at seven PM in the town hall, room fourteen, to jointly release what that guaranteed maximum price will be because it will be at one hundred percent on that day. And it will be, it'll be shared by Gil Bane, the CM at risk. So those are the pieces of information that we have leading up to a special meeting and a special town vote. On, but I wanted to just bring you up to speed. On Wednesday, December nineteenth, there was an MSBA facilities assessment subcommittee meeting and Cliff alluded to this already. Representatives from Doran Whittier, PMA, the Chair of the SSBC and representatives of the MSBA board met to discuss the project budget at sixty percent construction document completion as compared to the approved budget total, as well as plans to communicate changes to the community. And during this conversation and during this meeting, the MSBA requested clarification from school administration around any changes to the proposed educational program in the areas of science, technology and distance, distance learning. So on January third, the middle school principal, the high school principal, a representative from PMA, Doran Whittier and I met and we constructed a response to the MSBA that was then submitted with other additional documents that were requested by MSBA. They were submitted on January eighth. We've not heard back from the MSBA, but I assume if there is any communication, it will be through our own as project man, manager and then we'll know better. But I wanted you to have that information. And then on last Friday, January eleventh, Patrick Daly, Kathy O'Connell, John Bernard and I met with the technology consultant, Paul Shapiro, as well as representatives from Doran Whittier to discuss planning details associated with the TV studio in the new school. So we took a look at layout, programming, equipment, infrastructure, electrical. It was about a two hour meeting. It was very productive, enlightening and inspiring. So there's lots of good news that's still taking place around this building project.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next I believe we have Bills and Harrell are done.
School committee meeting, schedule.
Schedule. And in light of the, some of the dates you just gave us.
So as some of these dates were being discussed through SSBC, the Chair of the School Committee approached me and asked if tonight we could take a look at the current school committee's schedule of meetings from now to the end of the school year and take a look at whether or not we need to either add meetings or change meeting dates in order to comply with some of the dates that are being proposed, either for a special town meeting or anything else that the Chair would like to approach at this particular time.
So the January twenty eighth, we have a meeting here and that's the middle school night to present their programs. Will we be able to get back here from the selectmen's meeting?
Yes, we will. I shared that meeting with them and they know that we need to be back here for seven PM.
For seven o'clock, okay.
They do not anticipate any delay.
And then even though no dates have been set, if March eighteenth is the special town meeting, we have a meeting scheduled that night, which will not be able to take place.
That's correct.
So where would we move that? Just to the next week or you can't do it on the twenty fifth, right? We can't?
Well, that's the first night of Passover.
Oh, right.
Well, March eighteenth, Mel, that's special town meeting?
Yes.
So we'll probably have a scheduled meeting that night anyway.
We had, she had a special presentation scheduled for that night.
On March eighteenth, we were going to give an update on the bullying prevention and intervention plan. We can reschedule that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, what I'm saying, we wouldn't be able to do it that night.
No, we would not be able to do that presentation that evening.
Right.
Can I just ask the January twenty eighth meeting?
Are coming together for the sole purpose of the GMP.
No, I guess the only problem, I, I guess his schedule will work. The only problem I see is that you're going to have to reschedule that bullying prevention and intervention meeting date.
Yes, we can probably push that out to April.
And everyone's okay? I just want to make sure everyone's okay with having one meeting in February. Okay.
We have three in April.
Right.
And I did take a look at last year. We have the same number of meetings this year as we did last year. Excuse me, we have three again in June, but we had two in February last year with one this year. But three in April, two last year.
When will the budget be presented?
Doing a budget presentation, where was this? Initial budget presentation.
Is it February eleventh or is that too soon?
Oh, we have the budget hearing on April first, but that's not the preliminary budget.
No, that's, when do we see the preliminary budget?
The preliminary budget, I don't have that date in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either.
Okay.
I know.
You don't have to. I'm assuming it'll either be that February eleventh or March fourth, the February eleventh and March fourth meeting. Now's my concern if we don't get it February eleventh and that's a long time to.
Why aren't we meeting February twenty fifth?
We're not meeting the twenty fifth, are we?
No.
We're not meeting the twenty fifth. We're meeting the eleventh, then we're meeting the fourth of March.
But why aren't we meeting, oh, the fourth of March, that's wrong.
Yeah, because.
The fourth, the eighteen.
Why can't we meet the eleventh and the twenty fifth of March?
And then the next week, the fourth? You meet three weeks?
And then we have a meeting on the eleventh now.
The fourth.
If you, there's February vacation.
The eleventh and the twenty fifth, the fourth.
The fourth is already set for the little school.
Can't go the twenty fifth. It's, it's Passover.
Right.
Does that mean?
We don't have meetings.
On Passover?
On Christmas holidays.
Is school open?
School is open. That, Passover begins that night.
Don't push it.
Well, I mean, I guess if you celebrate it, you don't come to the meeting, right?
If we have a meeting that night.
I would recommend we don't have a meeting that night.
Yeah, it's not scheduled, right?
No.
Yeah.
So I don't see us any point in scheduling one now that there isn't one in there. Plus the March fourth is the little school is already.
Booked.
Booked for that meeting. So I can't, I couldn't see moving them. So, I mean, I, I'm fine with the schedule that is, as is with all these new meetings added in. You're just going to have to reschedule the bullying prevention and intervention session.
When's the prelim budget?
I don't know. That was my one concern.
That's the one concern.
If we don't get it on February eleventh, we're not going to see it till March fourth.
And that's, that only gives us less than a month.
Right, less than a month.
Carl's going to go back right now in a second.
Okay. As well as doing that, we want to, we want to go to the minutes. We only have one set of minutes tonight. And I looked them over. It's a open session from December seventeenth, two thousand and twelve. That was our meeting at the high school. So if any, if any can make a motion.
Move to approve. A second.
Before the discussion, carry none, all in favor.
Aye.
Bills and Harrell, I think we're done. And then Carl has to give a budget update. Anything on staffing? Kathy?
No.
No bids and donations?
No, it's time. I'll be right back.
Subcommittee updates. I was not able to, what do we have? I was not able to attend finance planning this week. So I don't know if.
Evaluation was on Wednesday, January ninth.
Right.
Cliff with her.
I wanted to, if, if, you or Cliff wanted to give a finance planning team report.
Finance planning.
Yeah. And evaluation, what else do we have to?
Paul's who got me until this one.
Who else does meet to this one today? So on the, the evaluation, subcommittee met to discuss the new evaluation that needs to be put into place for the superintendent. It's, it's similar to what we have been doing, but there's a new rubric and it's more complicated. We don't have to put it into place until the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year, but we're going to do an eighteen month pilot. Rather than have Kathy go through the old process, she's going to submit goals to us to comply with the new process, which involves also us helping her with those goals. And I believe at the next meeting, she's going to bring a presentation so we are all up to speed on what our responsibilities are going to be in this new process. It's part of the whole teach, new teacher evaluation process. It includes everybody, teachers, other administrators and the superintendent. So she'll be presenting that next meeting.
Next, yes, the next meeting.
And then finance planning team, was there anything besides the school that was discussed?
Hmm, not really. There's just, just a discussion really of the, you know, revenue and the, and the, the costs and looking at that as we usually do.
Early, yeah.
And it's too early to really come to any conclusions on anything, but.
It's still early in the process.
And we do know the governor is actually going to present his budget for next year a little earlier this year, about a week early.
Than usual.
No, which means you get even, even, even more.
More frustrated.
Inaccurate numbers that you can't rely on.
Awesome. I love that. I love that.
So Carl, the budget.
March fourth is the date where we will be distributing the preliminary budget.
And that's in the plan?
Yes.
Okay. So that doesn't, I'm just looking at the meeting schedule.
Excuse me, Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And then on March twenty seventh, we'll be making a presentation of the preliminary budget to the finance committee.
Okay, March twenty seventh.
March twenty seventh. That was discussed at the finance planning team on, on Friday.
What time is that meeting?
Seven PM.
So March fourth, we get the budget. Yeah, I mean, the, the problem with that is we really won't have a meeting to discuss the budget after March fourth. If the special town meeting is the eighteenth. Unless we hold a regular meeting on March eleventh after we meet with selectmen.
We may have to.
What time is, we could do that or the special town meeting, Mel? There's no reason why we couldn't schedule a meeting at five thirty.
But then Karen.
They can't, they can't. I'm sorry, sorry.
We'd be better off doing the eleventh.
I won't, I won't take your hat off, no problem.
There may be enough stuff to go on.
I think the eleventh would have.
I'll just cough on them.
Yeah, so we should just schedule a meeting for the eleventh after we meet with.
To discuss the budget.
Selectmen and SBC, just for the budget.
Okay. And will we turn back here or would you like me to try to get a room at town hall?
If you get a room at town hall, that'd be better. It's a great way to spend my birthday.
Oh.
Getting the, getting the hundred percent, getting the guaranteed maximum price for the project, school project and discussing the school budget. This is my dream.
That could be the best birthday you've ever had.
That's what you always wanted.
Can we lift the moratorium on cupcakes?
Yeah, we should bring cupcakes for me that night.
Absolutely.
I didn't say we should, I mean, you should.
Which is we stuff.
I'll put it on my list, things to do.
All right. Carl, we also have a budget update from you.
Yes, we do.
For the current budget.
I don't think Karen can bring cupcakes unless one male member brings cupcakes as well.
Don't start, don't.
I don't want to.
Don't push it.
I don't want to violate any, any.
We're already in a vulnerable state, stop.
You know, I, I should mention that in regard to food, you referenced earlier the presentation made by our school lunch personnel and the Governor, Chris Callahan. About a week after that presentation, the federal government loosened the school lunch requirements in allowing different amounts of grams for all the different food groups.
Do you think we caused that? From our meeting? I mean, Mel had some strong things to say.
They were watching, and they saw how much we liked the food.
We're giving him all the credit.
We have a lot of influence.
Come on, listen up.
We should do that once a month, Carl.
Yeah.
That was great.
Celebrating ourselves.
So I think you can have more starch now, you can have more of the different things, more iron, or whatever, that you couldn't have before.
More saturated fat, all of it.
I tell you, we're, we don't even know when people are watching.
We're highly influential.
Anyway, thank you, the December 12, 2012 budget report is at your place. The continuing issues that we are following, I referenced in the cover note, and the continuing issues, there's nothing to report. I think that the budget process continues to stay on track. We continue to watch our special education costs, which as the committee knows, are significantly over budget. And we noticed that very early, which allows us to alter our budget management process so that we can pay our bills and end the year in the black. At this time of the year, though, you start to think, gee, maybe we can use some unspent funds to kind of ameliorate the special ed problem. You can't say that early in the year, because you don't know what your spending patterns are going to be. So I'm hoping that that will be the case. The second pattern that's, has emerged is, it's just a historically high level of leaves of absence are taking place, and there's a lot of work going on to identify highly qualified long-term subs to come in and take the place of our permanent teachers. As I noted in the cover note, there are literally seven new leaves of absence that will take place in the monthly budget alone.
Well.
And, you know, with our faculty of a little over 200, that's a pretty high number. So those have financial implications. I didn't note it in the cover letter, but I'd also just mentioned that, you know, we continue to find some financial pressures in the school lunch program. As, as, as much as we're proud and pleased with the quality of the food that we provide, we continue to see slippages in the number of meal counts that are being purchased by students. And we're all, as we've noted before, we hope that over time, changes will take place that'll allow the meal counts to rise. But I think that at the end of the year, it's probable that the subsidy that we have budgeted for school bunch, lunch will be higher than we had originally forecast. But I'll provide more information on that at the next budget, monthly budget meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carl, I have one question, do we know what the, do we have, have we gotten our circuit breaker allotment yet?
No, no.
Do we have, do we have a good idea of what it's going to be, or?
We will when the Governor releases his.
Okay, that's right.
His budget. He'll, he'll forecast a number, and then we'll apply that number and that percentage to this year's complement of special ed costs. But there's no new information on that at this time.
And you're still confident that, that number, which is a pretty big number, the special ed number, we're over budget 285,000, we'll be able to move a few things around and, and cover that?
Oh, yes, I'm certain, we have to cover it, we have no choice.
Right.
The impact is that it reduces the amount of money that we can bring forth into FY14.
Right.
To help us out there, but we will certainly cover it.
Okay.
Carl, one other question, the regular ed transportation is also seeing negative.
Yeah, that's homeless, we have, I wanted, it changes from month to month, but we've had costs that we didn't know about in the budget process to transport homeless children from wherever they live to North Reading. And there are times when you're transporting children from fairly moderate distances such as Saugus. I, I know that during this school year, we've had children in Saugus that we are transporting here. So that $15,000 overage figure is a forecasted number based on the current pattern of spending, and it's due to homeless transportation costs.
Is there a state or federal reimbursement for that?
Yes, there is. There's a state transportation reimbursement for that, but North Reading would not qualify for it, because you have to reach a certain threshold, and then any dollar amount over that threshold, you get a percentage of. It works similarly as circuit breaker does, but we're far from reaching a threshold, so it's a complete absorption of costs for North Reading.
Typical policy that punishes the suburbs, just like every policy basically that the state has in terms of spending.
Right.
It's just a general commentary. Anything else? I think, oh, we got future meetings we just talked about.
Can I go over that just a second?
Yes.
Can you tell me how we determine that somebody needs to be transported from Saugus if they're homeless?
May I ask the Superintendent to help me a little bit with this? It's my understanding that a decision is made about where the child was formally domiciled.
Mm-hmm.
And based on circumstances within that family, the child might be living elsewhere, but is still a resident of North Reading?
Not a resident, but entitled to attend the school of the last residence where they lived by becoming homeless.
That's the vehicle for happening.
That's correct.
Well, by definition, if you're homeless, then you're really not a resident of the place where you're homeless.
Right.
That's correct.
Sounds kind of loaded, but I think that's the rationale.
Living in hotels, doubled up families, there's a whole host of criteria that need to be examined in order to determine when a family does become homeless. But with the recession, we've seen an increase of homelessness on the rise, doubled up families, very much so.
Seems to me, though, that state policy should, you know, should help all communities pay for that cost, you know, not make you reach a threshold. You know, the threshold for, for the special ed reimbursement is, is, has become totally ridiculous. What is it, $35,000, $40,000 you have to meet before you get any reimbursement from the state? What is it, four times, or?
Four times the foundation budget.